Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order this workshop in the Borough of Gettysburg for May 28, 2024. I'll do my best to speak clearly tonight. I've been a little under the weather. An executive session of the Borough Council in the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the May 13, 2024 monthly business meeting of the Borough Council, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to provide the information and to discuss matters of employment, the terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation or performance of current Borough employees; and two, to review and discuss matters of Borough business, which if conducted in public, could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. We do not have any special presentations this evening, so that's going to take us into our first public comment section. This first section is reserved to items that appear on tonight's agenda. We ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and business, or I'm sorry, your name and address of residence. And please limit yourself to five minutes. If you would like to speak on an issue that is not on tonight's agenda, we ask that you save that to the final segment at the end of the meeting. Is there any public comment?
Good evening, members of the Gettysburg Borough Council and staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you a moment about metered parking.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
Okay, I'm sorry, yes. I'm Randy Wallet. I am Council Vice President of Christ Lutheran Church, which addresses 30 Chambersburg Street, Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. Christ Lutheran appreciates its long relationship with the Borough of Gettysburg. The congregation has been a part of Gettysburg at this location since our founding in 1835. We have been a partner in the history of this town for nearly 200 years. Your history is our history. In the early 200s, I mean, 2000s, when the congregation was in the midst of contemplating a significant renovation, we seriously considered moving out of the Borough and purchasing land and building a new church with parking. In the end, the congregation decided that it was important to stay where we were, in Gettysburg, and continue our proud history in the Borough, and continue to invest in the historic structure that we maintain in downtown Gettysburg, and to serve the community. I'd like to request that we return, that you return to allowing church to place bags on meters on Sunday mornings only, Sunday mornings only, so that mobility-challenged worshippers can more easily access our church. As was done in the past, the church would ensure that all bags would be removed prior to 1:00 p.m. Since we have not been allowed to place bags on meters, we have had members that have arrived on Sunday morning for the 10:30 service, and were not able to find a park and drove on down the street and went home. We think it's very, very important to our congregation that we have those few spaces in front of the church for a few hours every Sunday morning. I think it's certainly a benefit to us, and I think it's a huge benefit to the Borough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments this evening?
Always a pleasure.
Thank you. My name's John Lawver. I live at 524 McMillan Street, and I own properties on Barlow Street and Stevens Street. I'm here to talk about the sidewalk ordinance, because I'm led to believe that the Borough Council is considering taking over all the maintenance of sidewalks. Sorry about that. The big topic with the sidewalks has been trees and the upheaval of sidewalks. But that's really only a minor problem, considering all the rest of the maintenance issues that sidewalks prevent. And I'm not sure that you're looking at the big picture. You have concrete sidewalks, you have brick sidewalks on concrete, you have brick sidewalks that aren't on concrete, and you have blacktop sidewalks. Only concrete sidewalks really meet the ordinance. Maintenance of the brick sidewalks that are on concrete, pretty low volume. Maintenance of brick sidewalks that aren't on concrete, that were put on crushstones or just tamped ground, tend to weave over the years, up and down. And while they're not quite the same problem as an uprooted piece of concrete by a tree root, it's still a problem, especially for handicapped individuals that have to walk with a walker, or even some types of wheelchairs. And I know, because my mother walked with a walker for a long time, and I know how that was. But my big concern is, is where are we going to get the money to repair all these sidewalks? Concrete's about $200 and some dollars a yard, right, Chad? Somewhere in that neighborhood now? Probably a four-yard minimum for delivery. So, I mean, to do one tree hole, so to speak, you're not even going to have a yard of concrete, so you're going to be paying big money for that. And if you dig out enough so that you have four yards of concrete to pour, you don't have enough staff to do that. So you're going to end up having to contract them out. That's going to be another expense. No offense to Chad, but you're going to have to bid it. He's going to have to write specs. You're going to have to award it to a contractor. There's a lot involved in this, and it's not just a simple matter of fixing around trees. You have a lot of utility lines, whether they're owned by the property owner, water and sewer, or whether it was actually a utility. Could have been municipal authority, could have been Columbia Gas. MedEd's a big one. We have all the ghost poles, but when they pull the other poles out, because they don't want to just do one hole at a time, they leave a lot of holes open with just loose stone, so they get enough holes where they can get a contractor in to fix them. So you have utility ditches that lay for years. In the mid-'80s was the last time the Borough went around and did sidewalk survey. Up until the mid-'80s, we used to do a quarter of the town a year. In sidewalks that needed repairs, property owners were sent notices. In the mid-'80s, there were a lot of them. People would own those properties, packed this room. A lot of them claimed they inherited the problem, and that's very true. They did, when they bought the property. But when you buy a property, you have to be responsible for it, and you should know what you bought. I'm going to take a wild guess that 70% of the property owners in Gettysburg don't have trees in their sidewalks. Could be higher than that. Most of the tree problems are in the north end and the west end. And that's because of the age of the town and the homes that are in that town. I mean, Cole Park, there aren't any trees in the sidewalks. They're in the yards, because they have a yard. So I just think that this needs a lot of investigation before there's a decision made to take over sidewalks. And not that I'd be a bullheaded person, but if you're going to take over the maintenance of my sidewalk, are you going to come shovel my snow? You're going to keep the ice off of it in the wintertime? It's no different than a heaved sidewalk. It's a problem for slip and falls. And I know that's a big issue with the Borough. I've been involved in many of those. The Borough got sued many times on slip and fall accidents, and they shouldn't have been. But when we turn these things over to the insurance companies, the insurance companies don't look for fault. The insurance companies say, they want $5,000 to go away. It'll cost us $10,000 to fight in court. We'll pay the $5,000. And that's what happens. So I don't know what it's going to do to your insurance rates if you take over the maintenance, but you won't have any divided responsibility at that point. It'll all be yours. And there's just, there's just a lot of work involved. When we built sidewalks in town, our highway crew was a 10-man crew, and we had people on board that could do concrete work. We owned the forms, I guess we still own the forms, unless somebody sold them. We put in all the sidewalk out to rec park. We put in sidewalk at a lot of places where the property didn't have sidewalk, because everybody's supposed to have sidewalk. But there's a whole side, east side of Fourth Street, those properties were never forced to put sidewalk in. So the last two houses that were built down there, they got away with it. That's not what the ordinance says. The ordinance says every property has to have sidewalk. So to say you're opening a can of worms, I think is probably the safest set to say, because it's going to snowball on you. I'm just, you know, I was with the Borough for over 30 years. We fixed a lot of sidewalks. We sent a lot of sidewalk notices. But in the mid-'80s, when property owners packed this room, council backed down, and we never did a sidewalk survey after that. And some of the biggest upheaved sidewalks right now, people are taking shots at the tree commission. You don't plant an oak tree, and 10 years later, it's this big around and heaved your sidewalk. Tree commission is relatively young to the Borough of Gettysburg. Trees that have the biggest upheavals in the sidewalks were there long before the tree commission. And just a little bit, I spoke when I was on council. The announced lady on Chambersburg Street, I was shocked to find out that we had changed the rules on the tree commission, and maybe since you're going to talk about tree ordinance too, you ought to look into that. But when the tree commission started, they went around and they had an idea where they thought their trees should be planted. Then they went and they talked to those property owners. And the property owners could agree or disagree. Most of the time, they agreed. And most of the time, they paid for the tree. The Borough only had to dig the hole and plant a tree, get the trees here, and the property owners were responsible for that tree. They did the maintenance, not the Borough of Gettysburg. It was their tree. Now we seem to have not only decided where we're going to plant the trees, and we plant them without notifying the homeowners, as Chad found out one day.
John, I'm going to ask you to take about 30 more seconds and finish up your thought.
Okay. But they also have taken over total responsibility for the maintenance. I think they've gone a little bit overboard too, but times change, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment?
I'm Garrett Schaefer, 141 East Middle Street. And I'm here, I want to be careful to make sure that I explain that I'm here speaking out of 30-some years of experience serving on Harb as a citizen. I am not speaking as Harb's chairman. I want to speak to the one issue in the sign ordinance revisions, and I don't know where that completely stands. John Whitmore came to our meeting the other night at Harb, and unfortunately, he found out what happens when you ask Harb for their opinion on things. So it was this highly organized presentation. It was not a very highly organized response, but his patience won out. I wanted to speak because there's one aspect. I served on the sign ordinance committee. There were things we worked out together. When John came in the other night, I was concerned because the ordinance he presented to us said that internally-lit signs would be allowed everywhere. And there seemed to be support for this, he was saying on the council. I want to speak to that, based out of the experience that I've had since the 1970s, when the Gettysburg was first asked to respond to national criticism that was coming in, and people were speaking in the 1970s, and accusing Gettysburg of being a shame to the nation. And that was for a number of reasons, including signage. And we've worked hard since then on different ordinances and things, trying to find a balance. And I think the lit, internally-lit part of the ordinance allowing that is the thing that I myself thinks threatens the integrity of our historic district more than anything else. I know, I've been called and talking to people, I've been called old-fashioned because I'm holding on to old ideas. Been a strange insult to someone who serves as chairman of the Historic District Board, Review Board, to be called old-fashioned and too tied to history. But I think this board gets the same type of thing. It's easy to smear people with just making same accusations over and over again, because I've never understood, after working as an architect for 40 years in the Borough of Gettysburg, I've never understood the naming of the Borough Council and the Borough as anti-business. And it's just seemed that people have repeated that so much, that that's become kind of the image for the council. And I would have to say that my whole opinion of the council is it's been not anti-business, but very protective of residential neighborhoods. And as you look at that, that's a very positive thing. Anyhow, the ordinance that was presented to us the other night would allow internally-lit signs throughout the Borough. That was the rough thing. I want to tell you that in response to that, somebody told me, well, you ought to do a rendering to show people what it would look like. And I'm going to ask the council to actually, if you want to see what's being proposed, all you have to do is go to the West Gettysburg Shopping Center, and at night, stand in the parking lot. And this is a very successful shopping center. It has a lot of successful businesses, and every sign up on the face of the buildings is a lit, internally-lit sign. And you can imagine going to the square, because they're very much the same scale, and looking around and saying, is this what I would like to see on the businesses on the square? And I don't think that's where we want to go. And a lot of hard work is being done on this ordinance. The businesses have the council's ear. That's very important. But I think, in the end, I mean, I ask a more general question. Is Gettysburg going to be enriched by increasing the amount of signage allowed on all of its storefronts, and changing so that they can be lit up from inside the signs? My answer, in my experience, is a resounding no. I don't think that part of the ordinance helps us protect our historic character in the, and I just wanted to speak to that. I was going to wait till after your sign discussion, but I thought this would be the better time. Thank you.
Thank you.
President, can I just clarify?
We're still in public comment.
Okay.
Is there any further public comment? All right. What was it regarding?
Just to clarify what Gary just said, when he was referring to internally-lit signs.
So we'll wait till we get to the sign ordinance. All right. So our first item of current and old business this evening is the sidewalk ordinance revision, specifically Section D, the shade tree ordinance. Charles and John, and Chad, please take it away.
Yeah, so I put up our simple formula for solving all problems related to sidewalks on the projector behind you. The topic at hand tonight is Item D, shade tree ordinance. But before we get into how the shade tree interacts with the overall sidewalk ordinance, I wanted to give a brief update on the status of previously discussed items with the council. Notably, Item F, Lincoln Square Management. Solicitor Eastman is in the process of completing deed searches on all properties abutting Lincoln Square for the purpose of knowing exactly where private property rights of property owners end and where the public rights of way begin. Once these lines of delineation are known with certainty, staff will begin drafting a Lincoln Square Management ordinance for council's consideration. The second update is Item G, Lincoln Square Center Circle. Concurrent to the drafting of the new Lincoln Square Management Ordinance, staff will draft proposed amendments to Lincoln Square Center Circle Resolution, which is in your packet as Exhibit 4, to include requests for displays in the Center Circle as part of a special event permit process or procedure, and to also incorporate the function of the Gettysburg Garden Club and the work they do annually with beautification of the Center Circle, which is currently incorporated in a separate MOU between the Garden Club and the Borough. With that, also B, Item B, stormwater management. As noted by the Borough Engineer, there is no one-size-fits-all solution to installing leaders under sidewalks to pass stormwater onto a street instead of on top of sidewalks. The engineer recommendations are forthcoming, as staff begins to develop a proposed sidewalk replacement or maintenance program that includes cost share and/or financial assistance for property owners. So those are three brief updates on items related to the sidewalk ordinance that council has previously discussed and directed staff to pursue avenues of remedy. All right, on tonight's topic, former councilman Lawver spoke to the shade tree ordinance. I'm going to read this policy briefing summary. You all have it, but the public is not privy to that shared document just yet. So I'm just going to read this verbatim to kind of set the groundwork, the table, if you will, for our discussion tonight, so please bear with me. Many people argue that shade trees are a nuisance and not needed, especially when considering the cost of maintaining them. Given this mindset, it is important to keep in mind why shade trees are important and why shade tree commissions exist. For example, the Borough of Neptune, New Jersey promotes shade trees by the following passage, as noted on their municipal website. I was not able to find a similar passage on municipalities more centrally located here in Pennsylvania. So New Jersey identifies why shade trees are important. They increase property values, improve air quality, create a habitat for wildlife, they curb noise pollution, keep temperatures cooler, control soil erosion, maintain a calming environment, and then, of course, the beautification of the municipality. Among the direct economic benefits of trees are lowered energy costs to homeowners, lower air conditioning costs, lower heating costs when trees are planted as windbreaks, and value added from landscaped versus non-landscaped homes. The net cooling effect of a young, healthy tree is equivalent to 10 room-sized air conditioners operating 20 hours a day, according to the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Trees serve as noise barriers. Birds are attracted to the area. Leaves filter the air we breathe by removing dust and other particulates. Rain then washes pollutants to the ground. Leaves absorb carbon dioxide from the air, as well as other pollutants, ozone, carbon monoxide, and sulfur dioxide. They give off oxygen. The temperature near trees is cooler than away from them. Trees moderate the pavement or concrete urban heat island effects. Wind speed and direction can be affected by trees. Trees reduce storm runoff and the possibility of flooding. Dew and frost are less common under trees, because less radiant energy is released from the soil in those areas at night. Trees improve air quality, conserve water, and harbor wildlife. They moderate the climate, improve air quality, and conserve water. I would submit that Gettysburg Borough has a shade tree commission for all of the said items, as are neighbors over in New Jersey. The council has directed that they feel the Borough should assume the responsibility of planting and maintaining of shade trees. This is already actually assumed, in principle, in the current ordinance, where Section 25103 Subsection 1 states, and I quote, "It is the responsibility of the Borough of Gettysburg to maintain and remove street or park trees." The direction council is interested in moving is fairly unique. I am unaware of any other municipality expressly taking responsibility for strayed or street trees, and any surrounding heaved sidewalks. Accordingly, I thought it would be prudent to reach out to the Borough's insurance provider for some guidance as it relates to the liability and premium costs. The following is an email exchange I had with our insurance provider, Hockley &amp; O'Donnell. I wrote them. "Council is interested in moving in a direction to resolve ongoing challenges related to shade trees and sidewalks that are heaved by the roots of shade trees. We all know that this is a significant problem, and the Borough has been named in numerous trip-and-fall claims in the past resulting from these hazards. In these cases, however, the adjacent property owner is also named in the claim. The result of these claims has always been that the adjacent property owner's insurance pays the claim, as Borough ordinance stipulates, that is, the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to maintain sidewalks in an operable and safe manner. At a recent work session, council directed staff to investigate a new policy where the Borough would assume the responsibility of shade trees, placement, maintenance, species, etc. Concurrently, council is interested in also assuming the responsibility of the maintenance of the sidewalk directly abutting the Borough-installed shade tree. So I asked specifically, have you heard of any other municipality with this type of policy? Current ordinance states that the sidewalk maintenance is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner, too. If this becomes the new policy, would that absolve the adjacent property owner of any claim, should a trip or fall injury occur in front of their property? Or would it only absolve the property owner of liability if the trip or fall exclusively occurred on the slabs of sidewalk abutting the shade tree? Or a defined spatial perimeter around the Borough-installed shade tree? And three, how would this potentially affect the Borough's insurance rates, should this policy be adopted? Seems to me that accepting this liability exclusively would increase our rates." The response for our insurance carrier. "Thank you for the email. Regarding rates, by simply accepting exclusive responsibility, the annual premium that the Borough of Gettysburg would pay for liability insurance would not automatically increase. That being said, frequency of claims and the amount paid to an injured party would impact the insurance premium if you are exclusively responsible. I know that the Borough of Gettysburg takes great pride in its sidewalks, and I would be, it would be, and I would be confident that any issues would be fixed, which would minimize a trip-and-fall exposure. This might not be the current case, as the adjacent Homer may not have the funds to properly repair the damaged sidewalk. If there aren't any trip-or-fall claims, the premium would not be impacted by taking responsibility. If you change the ordinance, I would, this is Hockley &amp; O'Donnell's suggestion, I would want to make sure that the owners of each property within the Borough would still be responsible for snow removal," speaking to Mr. Lawver's comment. So that was the response to the multiple questions we proposed to them. There's a lot there to think about, obviously. So to get our conversation started tonight, we included a couple thoughts for the council consideration. We would recommend that the shade tree commission should prepare a comprehensive shade tree street plan for the Borough. I'm not aware of one that currently exists. I could be wrong, but I'm not aware of one that exists currently. The shade tree commission should identify the following. Shade trees in need of immediate pruning. Shade trees in need of immediate removal. Heaved sidewalks caused by shade trees that need immediate remediation. Comprehensive inventory of where shade trees are currently located within the borough. Comprehensive plan where shade trees should be added. The species of shade trees to be planted along with locations. I do believe that already exists in the ordinance. Prepare a five-year budgetary plan to address the points noted above. And then, if we were interested in entering into the concept of the borough taking responsibility for the heaved sidewalks created by shade trees, enter into agreements with abutting property owners absolving them of maintenance responsibility of shade or street trees and sidewalks heaved by the shade trees in a proposed five-foot circumference around the tree well. The remainder of the sidewalks should remain the responsibility of the abutting property owners unless otherwise identified by council." So, how do you want to chew on all that yet tonight?
I don't remember any discussion of the last time about the borough saying that we would take care of the adjacent sidewalk next to the tree. I know I didn't.
I mean, we were talking about repairing the damage that the trees had.
Right, so it seems that mystery represented a little bit of our discussion. I agree with what John was saying 100% when he was up here. I know I was talking about my neighbor saying, yes, we'll take responsibility for the sidewalks, but what about the tree first? So I would agree that we have to fix the sidewalk, but if these huge trees are still there, who takes care of that? So that was my question the last time. But I always assumed we would take care of the, or the property owner would take care of the sidewalk. Is that, Zach, we were talking more about the borough taking care of the tree, the property owner taking care of the sidewalk.
The last time we discussed this, the consensus was that the borough should take responsibility for the damage the tree does to the sidewalk. So if the slabs are heaved, based on the fact that the borough decided to put a tree there, then that would be the borough's responsibility. That was the consensus. But what I'm hearing here is that there are extraordinarily expensive ripple effects, including legal agreements with every single property owner that has a tree in front of their yard, which would have to be tied to the deed somehow, not to the owner themselves, right?
Yeah, frankly, I wouldn't know how all that works. But the, I mean, we could certainly investigate how that would work. But to member Berger's point is, yeah, it's a correct point in that where do you begin the maintenance and where do you end it? And where do you accept responsibility and where do you not?
So it sort of brings us back to where we started a couple months ago, the idea of a comprehensive survey of not just what you've outlined here for the staff, to staff recommendations for shade tree, but of the state of our sidewalks in general.
Right.
So, I don't know, it kind of seems like the discussion about who's going to pay for what is putting the horse before the cart if we still don't know the scope of the issue.
It will take some time just for even finding the inventory of trees in the borough. Just taking a walk around town.
There is an inventory.
Oh, there is?
Shade tree commissions would do an inventory and present that, but it hasn't been done for a number of years. Jane Parker Scott, who was real big with that, and Shirley Carlson, and Dottie Fidler, and they would walk the streets and they would present an inventory. So I do have an inventory, but I think it only goes up to like 2010 or something like that.
Right.
With where the trees were planted and when they were pruned, they had to complete inventory there.
Well, that'd be a good starting point at least.
Yeah, I do have that.
Anybody else?
What would we do with the trees that were planted before the shade tree commission began planting? How would they be identified?
Super good question.
John said there's quite a few, and I imagine that in some parts of town that the owners maybe planted them. Be something they'd have to.
I don't know how extensive that inventory is. And like, the dates associated with the trees they have identified.
They do have the dates, yes, they have dates when they were planted. I'll get that out for you tomorrow.
So I don't think we're ready to discuss this further. I think we need to sit down with the shade tree folks and come up with a plan of attack here to address a contemporary inventory.
Yeah, I don't think we can agree or not agree to take responsibility without knowing what we're agreeing to. Is it 30 trees? Is it 100 trees? Is it 200? And then what is the cost? We definitely need more information.
No, I would agree that you're not even close to taking that kind of decision-making right now.
No.
No, I agree with that. But on the flip side of it is, we keep it as it is. If somebody trips and falls, the borough's getting sued regardless. It's the borough and the property owner.
Both are always named.
Both are always named.
Right, but that would not change regardless of what we did here.
But it would be great to get some more information on inventory.
Okay, I'm going to make notes to. I'm going to make notes to start discussing this with the shade tree commission. Does anybody have a thought they would really like to share about this before we move on?
I think it's a great idea to have a comprehensive shade tree plan. I thank you, thank you for that. I think it's important, and I appreciate it. Give us a starting point.
And I agree with Mr. Lawver's comments regarding the shade tree commission and how it used to operate. And I would like for us to consider that process again. It's the process that I think, it's not that I am against trees, I'm not. But the process is very important. Talking to the property owner before cutting into the sidewalk and putting a tree that we're now responsible for doesn't make sense.
All right. Okay, I think we've got a lot to chew on there. I think I'd like to move on unless anybody else wants to. All right, everybody cool? All right, let's move on to the comprehensive rezoning, please.
I'm going to let Plan Director Whitmore talk about where we are in the process and maybe some of the high-level.
So this project began in May 2023. It hit the one-year mark. The first, it's a three-phase project. First phase was the staff working with the consultant, a working group to establish the basic parameters for zoning, rezoning for the ordinance for the new map. After that process, we're now, we've entered Phase 2. A staff draft document is available on the website, including the revised zoning map proposal. That Phase 2 is basically the planning commission portion. I've asked the planning commission to basically try to make this the summer project to allow for additional public comment in the form of either a town hall or open house. So something that's structured to allow for public interaction, but also to keep the dialogue, so that the ordinance keeps going forward. Oftentimes, when it becomes, when people talk about zoning, they end up talking about their property, which, while that's important, when we're looking at the entire borough at the 30,000-foot level, that can become an issue when it comes to time. Because one property owner can, if they dictate the entire process, we don't end up with a comprehensive rezoning. We end up with that property owner's wants. And I think everyone recognizes that. So in terms of the process, we're on track then to have some discussions. We're going to be providing some additional updates to the draft document here in the next month with the goal for June, July to really begin having the, I guess, discussion with the commission and then having those additional meetings. After which, the planning commission, once they have gotten to a point where they're able to recommend approval to council, that begins a process by the municipality's planning code. Various reviews, publication notices, and whatnot go out. The overall process, though, would be keeping a timeline to have a completion by the end of the year. Overall, the changes to the document, I guess, changes to the ordinance as has been drafted, it results in the ability for approximately 3.2 acres to have a potential height increase over the existing height increase. That's the big thing that we, I guess, when reading the newspaper, that seems to be a big talking point, especially the concept of high-rise, high-density buildings, which I would not characterize the proposal as that at all. Instead, very limited area of the borough would be eligible for up to basically a six-story building. That's not to say it's going to happen. And in fact, we've been trying to get Gettysburg Station to come in and discuss their project as that is pretty much the entire area where the additional height would be permitted. And they already have approval for increased height. So that's something that we're going to most likely have some additional discussions about, and it'll most likely also be in the public realm with the other news and information aspect, other websites. The other change is really, when it comes into the use of the Elm Street, that overlay district is going to be removed. The idea is that the underlying zoning for the properties would be in keeping with Elm Street, where it's beneficial, and areas where additional residential opportunities would make sense, given the built environment. Those areas are then going to be more of a residential zone. The ordinance does modify the business districts. We now have a wide range of mixed-use opportunities within the borough with the proposal, geared more, some higher residential focus, some with a higher commercial focus, but just providing a mix of use opportunities while also recognizing the need for, I guess, controls with regards to general commercial tourism. One of the things that is unique in the borough is the significant historic district. Most of the commercial areas in the borough are within the historic district, and those that are not generally are transitionary to residential areas. So it is something that when we're looking at built environment, this ordinance is going to shape a lot of things, but also keeping in mind that this is just one piece of the planning puzzle. When we're looking at subdivision land development in general, that's something we're probably going to be looking at to have more of the infrastructure improvements related to things that we had with the streetscape enhancements. So allowing for developers to have, basically allowing for the development to be controlled at the initial development stage as opposed to as a change of use. And I know that that's, I'm talking planner right now, so I'm sorry for the jargon. But the idea is that it would be, one of the things we're trying to do with this ordinance is making sure that it's actually feasible and workable for people that are going to be using it. The individual property discussions I've had with individual owners has been generally positive. Most of the questions, though, have focused primarily on Elm Street and on the height issue. That's pretty much all I have at this time. It will be discussed more by the planning commission. And so far, it's been, I would say, favorably received, and I'm sure we're going to have some good discussions.
All right, this has been a year-long process so far. A lot of people from our community have put in a lot of time and energy on this. I really appreciate you hitting the ground running halfway through. You took over when your predecessor left very ably, and thank you for that. If you had a chance to review that document at all over the weekend, I'm sure you noticed it's pretty sizable. It's coming in just over 190 pages. While it is longer than the previous ordinance, the goal was to make an ordinance that's actually easier for the user to understand. The district, the Elm Street district that Mr. Whitmore referenced was one section that had four overlays, each with different rules. And then the zone under all of that had a completely different set of rules. And that sort of confusion for anybody who buys a property and wanting to know what they can and cannot do, that is really in navigable. And it's the result of 20 years of amendments and revisions sort of stacking up. I would recommend you start to familiarize yourself with the document, get to know it well. People will start asking questions of you, and you want to be able to give an informed response. And I would also recommend that members here, over the course of the summer, do follow the planning discussions. They will most likely give us a document eventually that is materially similar to what we see here today, but there will be differences as well, and you'll want to be able to navigate those. Does anybody have any questions or comments about this?
Does it affect, it's summer, affect that most people will be on vacation at that time and may not be able to come to meetings?
So yes and no. The planning commission process, that's why it's going to be going over multiple months. So I recognize, and I think everyone recognizes that there's no perfect time for a meeting. It's always going to be challenging for certain individuals of the community that would have great input, but due to the timing, they're not able to participate. That's one of the reasons why we're really encouraging electronic communications to bring those comments to our attention. You don't have to attend a meeting to get the gist of what the document says. If you have trouble understanding what the document says, we have staff available to discuss it. But overall, it's something that we're aware of. But also, I say summer, we'll be going into September when we're actually getting to the point where the approval would happen by the planning commission. So there would be at least one opportunity. I anticipate there'd be at least one opportunity if you go on vacation. Now, if you're going on vacation all the time, that's good for you, but.
Good for all of us. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we do have citizens recommending that we film the planning commission meetings. And of course, we would need an emergency budget to do that. We can't do that until next year. Would that be a possibility, that we can consider that, knowing that this is such a high-profile, you know, massive change that people are concerned about? Is that a possibility, we could look into that?
I don't know that there's any massive changes. Really, I don't think that's a mischaracterization. It's really a lot of, I think mostly tweaks. There is a cost associated with the broadcast of our meetings. We currently pay about, I don't know, four grand a year for.
So the council's budgeted all of the business meetings and all of the workshop meetings and a couple of the budget deliberation meetings. That's around a $7,000 price tag. So if you start adding all of our ABCs, if you add up all the meetings and you broadcast them all, it's the better part of $50,000 for the year.
Not all the ABCs, but the planning commission.
Not all the ABCs, but the planning commission?
I mean, do we just air them only when somebody says they want to see them aired?
No.
We need, we'd need to come up with a comprehensive strategy for doing that. It can't be piecemeal, à la carte.
I don't know, but didn't citizens pay for the last? I heard that somewhere. Did that happen? Citizens just chipped in and had common, the media service do that?
You are asking us as though we were informed of it ahead of time? I have no idea. I have no idea.
Does anybody know?
I read about that.
I read about it. Yeah. They paid citizens...
It must be true. You read it.
Hey, I don't know. I just wanted to bring that up. And what I'm saying is, if citizens, this is a thought, if citizens chipped in and planned to have that meeting aired, can they also do it for other meetings?
So the answer to your question on that is absolutely yes. It's a public meeting, anyone can come in here and film this if they want to. Question is, does the borough want to pay for it?
Does the borough want to pay for it? That's the big question. So I don't always agree with Mr. Berger, but I do agree that that is a, that the planning topic is a talk right now. It's a big rezoning, it's comprehensive, you know, and a lot of business owners and residents are talking about it. And I think that there's some, you know, I would like for them to all show up to the meetings, but perhaps therein is the solution. If the cameras are allowed and legal and it is a public meeting, then perhaps some good citizen will come and film it and put it on YouTube for free to all. And maybe that will help get people to look at what was actually said at the meeting and not just read things.
All of our meetings are public, and everybody is welcome to come.
Absolutely.
And it's also covered in the Gettysburg Times and the Gettysburg Connections as well.
And I think the concern is, not everybody can attend in person and are requesting that there was an opportunity for them to see it, like most people, I think, probably watch our current meeting right now on community media or Facebook or whatnot. They're not actually here. As we can see, there's only about six people here right now. So my, my solution or suggestion to, is maybe some good citizen that is very concerned about this would come, video the planning commission meetings, put it on YouTube, public. There you go.
Anyone else?
I had a question just about. Looking through the different heights in the different sections, looked like most of it's stuck to 48 feet. And then institutional and healthcare went to 60. And then the only one that was at 70 was the revitalization. Is that accurate?
Yes. And I would add, the current ordinance allows for 60 in the institutional zones, so that's not really a cha, that increased heights, I've been there for a while, I'll say. The real difference is allowing for 72 feet in the revitalization zone. That's the, the new portion of heights.
Well, to clarify, 72 feet plus mechanical is already allowed in revitalization. That vote was taken six years ago, I think. This is, there is a proposal, though, to expand the revitalization district.
Yeah, it's a lot to read, but I really appreciate you jumping in, as Mr. Moon said. A lot of data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. So as I said, please familiarize yourself with the document. Obviously, these are issues that people are concerned about, and you want to be able to speak intelligently on these, so please take your time with it. And if you have questions, please reach out to Mr. Whitmore. Can we move on, please, to the sign ordinance revisions?
This, this will be pretty short. The ordinance, the draft that was established with the working group is the current draft of the ordinance. There's been some changes that have been suggested since that initial draft in April has gone out. I've had an opportunity to meet with, let's see, in addition to Harb, meeting with Main Street, the bid, signware bid, Chamber. I'll be meeting with Destination Gettysburg in June. I have not had an opportunity to schedule anything with Garmah. Basically, there, there have been some questions that have challenged my thinking. Additionally, there'll be some good conversation we'll have with council because it does get kind of tricky when we're talking about things like, as Mr. Schaefer identified in public comment, the historic district, as most of the commercial area for the borough is in a historic district. What do, does the council see as being fit for that level of advertising availability for the individual property owner, business tenant versus the goal of Gettysburg, I would go, I'll miss, like, the Gettysburg project as a, as a borough, maintaining not only just our infrastructure, but maintaining our sense of identity, requires a real good examination. And, I mean, I've had an opportunity to review the articles from the 70s, and it comes up in most of these meetings. And something I found that's interesting is, most of the commercial entities in those discussions, they rec, everyone seems to recognize that Gettysburg, there is something unique about the town that goes beyond the battlefield. And it's the history of the town that there is a potential that putting up signage, commodifying, commercializing certain aspects of the tourist experience in Gettysburg. I mean, you'd read the articles about the kitsch factor of Gettysburg. Then you also see the pictures of Steinware, and you read the articles that are very negative about past generations of Gettysburg residents and how the built environment was negatively interacting with the national view of the battlefield. And so that's all, a long way to say that there's a lot to go over still with this ordinance. The, I guess, the unique aspects that we're going to be putting in that aren't currently in the, in the draft ordinance specifically related to the opportunities for murals and signage on painted buildings, I was, hopefully, we'll come to a consensus on how to proceed with that when it comes to the historic district. But yeah, we're, we're still having conversations with stakeholders, and, but I guess, it will, it will be a good discussion to establish what council's role will be in this, because one of the aspects we've looked at is for the historic district properties, allowing for a certificate of appropriateness for signage in certain circumstances, which that allows then for the signage to be in keeping with our design guidelines, but then also it provides an opportunity, an appeals opportunity, which it will put, as it's currently being drafted, there's opportunities for council to be engaged in, in individual sign discussions. I'm not sure if you want that power, want that authority, but it's just something where, yeah, we'll, we'll be engaged with not only what, what you want to see with signage, but what you want to be involved with when it comes to the individual applications.
Oh, does anybody have any interest in being involved in individual applications? If anyone's into that, I'll just assign that to you. All right. So do you have a timetable in mind for completion of the next iteration?
We should be able to have a revised staff draft complete in June after the Destination Gettysburg meeting. I'm pretty sure we'll be, we'll be at a point where we can then present that at a workshop, so it may be either the June or July workshop where we'd have a document ready for review.
And is there any input you're looking for from council at this moment?
The, what I always ask, and this is going to sound odd, but I want to know what signs you do not like. If there is something in the borough, something around the area, something that is visually unappealing. The reason I say that is, we're very constrained with how we can regulate the content of signage and that we can not regulate the content of signage. We can regulate the physical form of signage, and often, especially when it comes to illuminated signage, I personally hate where called electronic scrolling signs, those LED signs, they burn my retinas and I get headaches. Like, I, I, things like that, it's good to know because we can probably find a way to make sure that the public realm where people have to look at signs, if they have to look at it, it's one thing. So you're captive audience in many instances. Making sure we're, we're making opportunities available for the businesses to make sure they have their First Amendment right to be able to have free speech, but also making sure that the built environment is something you want to see.
All right. Do you have a list of considerations that you could circulate amongst us?
I'll, I'll work with the manager on that, and we'll get something out, too.
And then your working group is continuing to discuss these as well?
No, we're, the working group has, once, once we have another draft, I'll probably send that out to the working group, where we've, after having the initial draft, we've not met since that time. But, yeah, it's probably a good idea, once, if the draft is, with the additions, would probably be something that would, it'll be beneficial for them to look at it, we'll get some additional comments from the individual members, and then present that all in the package then to council.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitmore on this subject?
Go ahead.
Okay. Are we responsible for making sure that the signs are ADA compliant, the accessible design of the sign?
So one of the issues that, one of the problems that we would have, that we do have, the sidewalks create challenges in and of themselves. The street furniture, so benches, bicycle racks, our hard infrastructure telephone poles, any, any exterior, exterior right-of-way impediments, they all have to follow ADA. So we have to, I mean, we as a borough have to make sure that we're allowing at least five-foot-wide area clearances, with the exception of certain instances where you can have three, four-foot-wide travelways. There has to be opportunities for people to be able to maneuver around each other. So that's one aspect. We also have a general ADA requirement as a municipality to have an ADA plan. As it is our infrastructure, we should be ensuring that it meets federal regulations. And then the other aspect, though, is when individuals put out signage in the right-of-way, the way ADA works, it's, it's a little backwards as compared to most federal regulations. It's initiated by a private lawsuit to be able to enforce compliance. What we do, and this is something that the code enforcement officer in his rounds, if he finds instances where signage is clearly making an impediment issue, there's, it's creating travelway issues, have a conversation with the property owner, it's portable signage, they can move it, it can be moved. We haven't, at least since I've been with the borough, we haven't had a situation where we've taken signage out of the public right-of-way, but, I mean, that's something we have the power to do. Additionally, it's something where if we were to receive complaints from the public regarding specific locations as being difficult to traverse, then that's when we would have discussions with not only the business then, but also the property owner to see what we can do to either provide different types of signage, look at those opportunities, or coming up with a hard, hard answer that in some instances, there will be a business that while they have a sidewalk, they may not be able to put signs out.
Does that answer your question?
It did. I was thinking more about the other accessibility issues, not just mobility issues, but...
Content.
Yes, like braille, things like that, things that are on the surface of the sign.
So we would not have to regulate that. That would get into the, I believe that would get into content, but only, there are instances, like when, so a good example, meeting ADA as it applies to new building construction, there are certain requirements, especially like when you look at hotels and motels, in which case, that gets more into the private property issue and compliance with ADA. We, I mean, if we're, if we're producing material, we have to follow, especially like outdoor signage, we have to follow generally, it's MUTCD standards, other engineering standards for the signage, like reflectivity and all of that. So there, there's design guidelines that we follow, it's just, it's, it's the private property owners and private businesses that sometimes they're unaware of their responsibilities.
That did answer my question. Thank you.
Mr. Carr?
So, Mr. Whitmore, I'll be reaching out to you on a couple of things specifically. I don't want to take the time today, but I do have a question, if I could, to Mr. Schaefer about his comment in public comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Schaefer, you were talking about internally lit signs. You're talking about an exterior sign that has lighting within it. You're not talking about lit, you're not talking about illuminated signs inside the building on the window.
My concern was addressing, as you noted, signs that are hanging outside the building that have internal lighting in them so that they glow and everything like that. The internally lit neon signs and everything that has become an issue, I wasn't speaking to that because there's certain legal issues that have impacted our ability, or we're told have impacted our ability to control those. Originally, they were not allowed. The neon signs, the beer signs, stuff that hung in the windows, they were in, when the first sign ordinances went in, they were not allowed. But over the years, that has changed in interpretation.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify what we were talking about, where it's lit.
You're thinking like the AutoZone sign right outside of town?
Right. Like, yeah, like an external sign that's lit internally, not an interior lit.
There you go. There's the distinction.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments or questions on this?
Yeah. You said, I think you might have said it, but there were no change, I didn't see any highlighted changes in this draft.
Not in that draft. We'll be producing another draft this, in the coming weeks.
Anything else?
When is your next, just for my reference, if I decide that I need to add one more meeting to my agenda? Can you tell me when your meeting with your working group is next?
Well, so, yeah, the working group has, we haven't met since the end of April. If, if in the event that we do hold another meeting, I can, we'll get that information out, you'd be able to attend, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, talking with, about this topic with business owners in town, for example, and no offense whatsoever to any business owner that happens to be on your working group, and no offense to Main Street, Destination Gettysburg, Chamber, Garmah, but there are many restaurant and small business retail owners in the borough, specifically in the old district downtown, that are not part of any of those organizations I just met, I just mentioned. So I want to make sure that we are hearing from all of those voices as well. So I will be reaching out to you on a couple of questions. And again, I thank you for all your work that you're doing.
Okay. If there's nothing further, we'll move on to the Gettysburg Welcome Center, please.
Yeah, just, this is more of an, just a brief update on the status of the Welcome Center.[1799.38] Yeah, just, this is more of an, just a brief update on the status of the Welcome Center. The Welcome Center project recently was reviewed by both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Hearing Board. At issue for discussion was, the term Welcome Center is currently not a defined term in the current zoning ordinance as a use by right. And also, the current zoning requires that a conversion property be 5,000 square feet if you're developing a non-residential entity. The lot size is currently, well, it is under 5,000 square feet, it's about 4,300 square feet. So, special exception and a variance was requested by the Zoning Hearing Board. That request, both, both those requests were reviewed by the Planning Commission and unanimously recommended to the Zoning Hearing Board for approval. Zoning Hearing Board concurred, so both the special exception and the variance were granted, which gets us past yet another hurdle for the development of the property. Main Street Gettysburg launched an endowment campaign this past week with the goal of raising a million dollars, so that we can put that in the community foundation as a permanent endowment. Interest on that would then be used for the annual operating and maintenance costs of the facility to relieve that burden from, from the tax rolls. Any questions on that update?
Is that a fund that would be available for receiving donations at the giving spree?
I believe that's the intent.
Put it on your calendars, everybody.
But you don't need to wait till the giving spree.
No, you don't.
So that concludes that, if there's no other questions.
Anybody have any questions about that? It's moving at an alarming rate for us.
It's actually considering how government generally operates, this is lightning speed.
It is lightning speed, and I am very grateful for the effort that the engineer, and the manager, and Main Street, and everybody are putting in on this project, thank you, everybody. It's very cool. All right, temporary reservation of metered parking spaces for museums and churches, Ms. Thistle.
Charles, do you want to start?
Let's just kind of go through where we are with the current pilot, you know, what our observations have been. The pilot does conclude June 22nd, so we should start thinking about making decisions whether council wants to renew that, terminate it, or move it in other directions.
So, as far as the pilot, that the restaurants were added so that buses could park there and reserve the meters, there has been two permits purchased, not by any of the restaurants themselves, but generally by, it was either the bus driver or the company that were visiting those restaurants. So we have had those two permits, and just those two. I also have, there has been, I told you I would keep you updated as much as I could, but there has been 13 tickets or warnings issued to buses for various things, some overtime, some parking in the handicap spaces, some not parking in any space at all. So those were either ticketed or warnings. And then, they, on the staff log sheets, they did observe 21 buses that were either paid, or they were, they moved before they could speak with them. And so we're not sure where they were going, what they were doing, but they were either paid or they moved. And that was noted on their log sheets.
Okay. So, what I'm hearing is that our second pilot program is not being utilized.
Correct.
Is anybody receiving any feedback on this?
It's, it's just not affordable. That's the main feedback that I've got.
From whom? Like, other businesses that would have used it? Anything else?
I think the all-day reservation is just untenable. I, I think we need to give people the opportunity just to do it certain times. I know that sounds complex, but I think that's what staff would probably have to do if it would be workable. That being said, I spoke strongly for the church parking the previous meeting. I, I do take into account what Mr. Carr said about fairness, and with all the unintended consequences with the pilot programs, I'd be willing to let the churches put their bags on, I would be willing to let museum owners put their own bags on, and business owners. I think we should have oversight in how they would use them, if they would abuse that privilege, but for me, taking account to fairness and seeing how that works, that would be my proposal. But I think, I still don't think the churches should have to pay for it.
So, staff has actually noticed that businesses are now beginning to use parking. That is consistent with the original pilot program that council scuttled last fall. Becca, do you want to speak to the number of buses parked on York Street where the?
Is this Denver St. James?
Yes, it is.
That's what we proposed.
So whether they're all, they're doing that on their own, or they're being directed to do that, that is now being utilized as was envisioned back last fall. I would also comment, so I have a picture to show, that a similar business is now doing the same thing on Baltimore Street.
What am I looking at there?
You're looking at a privately bagged meter, that is not the borough's meter bag. But this was reserved for a bus within the last week.
It was not reserved by the parking department.
Was it permitted?
No.
It was not. But, this is in the exact location that the last pilot program envisioned.
So I'm looking at a bag and a sign, the sign is clearly ours, the bag is not, and the spot was not permitted to the parking department.
Correct.
Was it on that day?
No.
It was not.
This was on Sunday.
The sign was there?
The sign was placed because we didn't have staff. So the signs were placed Friday and Saturday, but that bag was only there on Sunday. And that bag was removed, two bags were removed from the parking department.
Sunday morning, Sunday afternoon?
Sunday afternoon.
So organically, it seems that things are gravitating to where we were testing it last fall. Staff still maintains that's a better program.
Designated bus parking?
Correct.
With special rate meters?
Correct.
That is proximal to the businesses that would utilize them.
Correct.
All right. Please think about that, as we approach our June workshop, we will have to make a decision as to whether we want to continue this program, revert to the last one, do absolutely nothing, or come up with something new. Anything additional on parking for the churches?
No.
You were going to look into different signage options last time we talked about this?
We do have some signage, Charles, do you have that one?
Not.
Not right away. I do have some other options.
Okay, well, this would have been the time to have that ready, so.
So, yeah. Yeah, but I'll comment, since we're positive. Mr. Wall, I appreciate you attending. I spoke with past her at length, and I've shared with my colleagues that I also spoke with several, most of the businesses on the first two blocks of Chambersburg Street, about option one, two, and three, as previously discussed. And they absolutely do, including the church, absolutely does not want signage that says reserved parking Sundays, seven to one, as it would not only hurt parking revenue for the borough, but also confuse people the rest of the week. As Mr. Wall it says, the church wants bags, as they've done for many, many, many years. So, my point today is, if the whole, if a portion of this discussion of option one, two, and three was regarding, was regarding Historic Christ Lutheran and parking on Chambersburg Street, if they don't want any of those options, why are we still talking about it and wasting time? I feel like we need a different solution, and I agree with Mr. Berger that maybe we should go to the bags. I don't agree it should be their own bags, I believe it should be borough bags, but I do think we could take this, this and other problems away by going back to trying to figure out how we can approve for administrator of said business, or church, or museum, that has gone through the permitting process, to allow them to put the bag on for the hours that they need it, and take the bag off, as the church has, for example, done for decades, as the Shriver House has done for decades. That's my opinion, and I think we have other things, big things, including the zoning, including signage, that we need to really, really be focusing on. And I, you know, you can disagree with me, that's fine, this is my opinion, and I, it is a shared opinion of many of the businesses specific to the, to the topic that we're talking about in that first block of Chambersburg Street, because that's what the issue was. It was not only Christ Lutheran, I think it was also St. Francis as well, though. So, you know, I feel like we need a different solution, I don't think one, two, and three is a, is a solution for us. I think a solution may be going to the bags from before, letting them get the permit, get the bag. It's a borough bag, I definitely don't want to see plastic bags on, I mean, nobody wants to see plastic bags covering up, it's trashy. But I just don't think that we should be discussing it a whole lot further when the church itself doesn't want it, let alone the other businesses on that first block. The signage, I mean.
Can I make a statement about the signage, too, just real quick? I, I'm going to come out and say, I'm opposed to any signage that is not in compliance with the MUTCD. There's a reason it's called the Manual for Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and that's because they are the same from region to region to region, from city to city to city, from borough to borough to borough, from state to state to state. And you post a sign up there that, that is not in compliance with the MUTCD. In my opinion, it's unenforceable, at least under the vehicle code, and you just sow the seeds of confusion. We need to make sure, if you're going to put signs up, they've got to be compliant with the MUTCD.
That's, it, it just, for what it's worth, that's my opinion.
I, I'm not, I'm just not in favor of, of spending time and mon, borough time and money on signage that's not even compliant. I just think that we should strike away one, two, and three, and come up with a different idea.
And chief, having property owners?
Yes, that was actually the assignment for this week.
Chief, having property owners with the enforcement, that was brought up before, that, that's not going to be a problem if, say, museums or churches would put on their own bags.
The ordinance allows for, if, if they have a permit, for them to put the bag on themselves. The ordinance allows for that, and I, my, my opinion would be address a misuse, but let them do it. Again, for what it's worth, that's, if there's misuse, address it, if not.
I agree.
I think it, I think, I completely concur with what Mr. Carr said, it solves your problem.
So, the issue of whether there's misuse or not has to do with how we are pricing this reservation service. What was previously allowed was, for one specific type of business, a very, very, very sweetheart deal, where we were subsidizing those businesses for thousands of dollars a year. They were allowed for $150 to use thousands of dollars' worth of parking. So if we're going to charge them the full daily rate, we have to have it permitted. So they have to file a permit with Becca's office, which means we're going through all of the same steps that we are now, except they would be administering the bags themselves in this, this situation you're describing. But we still have to send the same staff members out every other single day to make sure the bags are not being used at non-permitted times. They will be abused, they have been abused, they have been abused. We have not enforced it, and we have lost thousands of dollars from multiple businesses. So, if somebody puts out a bag and they don't have a permit, what is the remediation for that? Is that fraud? What if somebody gets a ticket? What if somebody gets towed because they're in a space that was not permitted to be backed?
I'm not suggesting they would.
That, is that fraud?
I'm not suggesting that, but I'm suggesting it be permitted. But I'm suggesting that if we don't have the staff that can put them on and take them off at the hours that they need, so that the rest of the borough can use it when they're not being used, then we allow, we appoint someone from that permit applicant to do it. But it still needs to be permitted, I'm not saying that it can't be permitted. And with all due respect to the Historic Christ Lutheran bags that they've had for years, that's not appropriate. I think it, to have it permit, to have it permitted makes a statement of it is allowed by the borough, they've gone through the process, this is borough. But I, I hear your, I hear your frustration, and I share your frustration. I don't, I'm not suggesting that it not be permitted, though. They still have to go through the process with the borough.
And we have to go around daily, making sure they're not being used when they're not permitted? At how many businesses, every business? Every business, every church, every place of public assembly, every single one?
The other solution is, you know, since, since, I can't believe I'm going to say this quote, "Since everybody, since the kids can't play nice together in the sandbox, take it away from everyone." No reserved parking, period, public parking should be public parking, available to all. It's very sad that it's come to this, that we have businesses fighting each other, we have churches coming out and saying, wait, wait, we've been able to do this with no problems at all. And that is one thing I will say about the businesses that I talked to on Chambersburg Street. Not one complained about what Historic Christ Lutheran has done for decades. Decades, with their own bags, not one. They said, let them do it, it doesn't bother me. But unfortunately, it's not that for other businesses and other streets and other issues. And so now we've got all this fighting going on, and it's, it's really sad, it's really sad. So it's like all or nothing. You either allow everybody to reserve, or you allow no one to reserve, because no one can play nice together.
Anyone else? What I'd like to see is your proposed signage for those spaces, that's what we were looking for at this meeting.
I did provide that to Charles, Chad, and Robbie.
It's not in the meeting folder for tonight, so.
Cool.
I just think that number three, we should go back to it, do nothing, we have the process, follow it. I guess we'll have another workshop meeting?
Just go ahead and put it on every workshop meeting for here until the end of time. If you have something to say, can wait for public comment, please.
What do we want to do with the current pilot that expires June 22nd?
I need you to wait for public comment, please, I'm sorry, what?
What would you like to do with the current pilot that expires June 22nd? That's before our next workshop.
I say let it ride till June 22nd.
Yeah, but.
Even though no one's using it, just. Even though no one's using it, just, or two people are using it, let it ride.
Ride, riding will mean expiring.
Correct.
Does anybody see a reason to continue it?
Not in its current existence.
Anyone? No. So that would expire. Anyone in council have any further comments? I apologize for my frustration on this subject, that will not... We have no new business that takes us to the next public comment, period. This section is not restricted to items on the agenda, can be on any topic, please state your name, address of residence, please use the podium, please limit yourself to five minutes.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Goodness-Deed, I own the Shriver House Museum at 309 and 307 Baltimore Street, and over the last couple of weeks, and maybe the next week or so, I've had about 150 buses come to the Shriver House. I have paid for every single bus that comes to my business unless they're there after eight o'clock at night, and there's many of those. If you're curious where that bag was, it was in front of the Shriver House Museum, that was my bag. And the reason I put it on there is it was Memorial Day weekend, very busy, I did not want to pay for those meters and have them gone for the entire day, losing those spaces for customers and people for not just only my business, but other businesses up and down the block. So, about 45 minutes before the bus came, which is the way I did it with the other meter bags forever, yep, I put my giant grocery store meter bag on the meter. When the bus got there, well, we were going to take it off, and then we plugged quarters into the meters. I'm insulted when you say that I have stolen thousands and thousands, stolen's not the right word, but I have been abused, allowed to get away with not paying thousands and thousands of dollars. Again, with, let's say, 200, 250 buses a year, and for each bus that comes, I pay $2, $1 in each meter because that's all I really need. So that, to me, comes out to like $500 in a year, not thousands, about $500. And when you say, who are you going to check on, everybody, business in town here? No, for 28 years, I just listened to Becca say all the amount of time that the borough has spent to have people writing down these things, checking on the meters, taking pictures, going all around town to, talking to bus drivers. In 28 years, I don't think I've ever had a police officer or a parking person waste five minutes of their valuable time to talk to a bus in front of the Shriver House because I followed your rule that allowed me, and the state of Pennsylvania says I'm allowed to do it, too, to put the meter bag on about 45 minutes before the bus comes, and as soon as that bus leaves, we whip that meter bag off. And I, when you say who, people who abuse it, I don't know who they are, but I can guarantee you, the Shriver House has never, ever abused those meter bags. Any questions? Thank you. And I appreciate your common sense, and Chad, I appreciate your common sense, it worked for years and years and years. So why you want to make a change, you're taking up much more borough time because it was working, and like you said, give somebody the right. It's not if, it's only like three businesses in town that are looking for this opportunity, and the borough council worked very, very hard years ago to determine which would be the businesses that would be allowed to do it. And there's only like three businesses, four businesses in town that do this. And you've always trusted me to put them on and take them off, and I'm not going to waste a whole entire day to have a meters blocked when I don't only need it for one hour out of an entire day. So I do wish that, once again, you go back to common sense, leave it the way it was, save money for the borough, and if I abuse it, you come up and give me a fine and take the meter bags away. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Again, Randy Waller with Christ Lutheran Church. I just want to remind the council that we're only proposing Sunday mornings, we don't take a penny out of the revenue of the borough because the meters, no one's feeding meters on Sunday mornings, but it's a huge service to the, to the community, to the people that attend church there. We aren't proposing to do it on our Wednesday evening services or a Saturday afternoon wedding, or, I mean, those are special circumstances that somebody would have to get a special bag and pay for bags. We're only looking at Sunday mornings before 1:00 when the meters, you know, start operating, so. You know, we value our relationship with the borough, we don't want to take money away from you, I mean, that's important for you, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment? All right.